I'm gonna go ahead and call this special meeting to order for a KASB work session with Gary Seacrest to review focus group and online surveys.
Okay, oh mine?
Oh, well, roll call, everybody's here except Tracy.
Yep. Pass those around your way.
We'll just add her.
I leave one at Tracy's office. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to work with your staff today and some students. So you can see, we probably didn't have the numbers that you would prefer, but you can see we had thirty different individuals that attended the focus groups today. First one was at seven and the last one was at three thirty. So had a fun, fun day with those that did attend. So if you are aware, we asked these focus groups the same four questions as we're trying to develop trends for your consideration when we're looking for your new superintendent. The first question was, what's the most important leadership or personal qualities that you would like to see in your new superintendent? And as you can see, now I put these in groups, so when you see a tally on the first three questions, that is a response from a small group, not an individual. So, an effective communicator or something that does with communication, transparency, listening skills, those types of things, nine different groups said that was important to them. So you can see that rose to the top. There was not a lot of differentiation on some of these questions, that's probably the biggest differentiation on that, on the four questions. And then five groups said something about being approachable and strong people skills. So, just because your current superintendent is here, I wanted to make it very clear that this is what they would like in their new superintendent, it's not supposed to be a reflection of what your current superintendent has. I think I'm telling you enough that there's some influence there, but it's supposed to be what they would want in their new superintendent. And then you can also see with four tallies, honesty, open and honest, those types of the things that we'd all hope for our children is what we want in your new superintendent. If you do not see a tally, that doesn't mean I just randomly decided to write that down. One group said that, so would have one tally if I would've gone through that. So, looking at that question there, does anything on that question, the responses that you saw and see on question one surprise you? Is there anything you would want me to know that I cannot believe? Communication was number one, I think that should be last, or just general comments for my consideration?
I think it's a nice, strong list.
Okay, feel good, got at least one board member that feels fairly comfortable with what you've seen. After this, we're gonna go through the online survey, and you had a lot of good response there, so you'll have a good idea to have a, some comparisons and contrasts between what you've seen. The second question is a good question, what are the strengths and the good points about your school district that you want the new superintendent to understand and support? So, I had each of the group come to consensus on two or three responses, and as you can see, seven different groups said something about your community. Now, when the last ones, I put these all together, kind of grouped them, you may have done it different, I may do it different if I was, had all day to do it, but the first there was seven, had something to do with community support, engagement, those types of things. And that's a strength, remember? And I think as an outsider looking in, I would agree, I think it appears to me that your community has great community support. And then with five individual groups, mentioned something about the academics of your school, which is really nice to hear, that that gets up there pretty high. Something about the educational programs that you provide for your children, that it seems like your staff is fairly supportive of the educational initiatives that you attempt to do. The kids was interesting, one kid group said big on academics, not that was really kinda neat to hear students say that. And they also said the students, I'm not usually supposed to be telling you what group, but the students said, we believe we're being set up for success, so that was kinda neat to hear from that particular group. So, as you can see, and then lesser responses on that, and once again, if there's not a tally, one group did say that. So, same question, any surprises there, any comments that any of you would wish me to be aware of, that I can make a note? Once again, you think that feels pretty good? Those are some other strings that you would like me to put a little higher on that list, some a little lower, or do you feel comfortable with what I heard on that question?
I'm not surprised by the first one with the biggest response, I mean, it's good to see though, because I think that's very important, especially somebody who might not be from a smaller community like this.
Right, I bet. I don't always hear that, so it's kinda nice, now you're a smallish community, but at the same time, you're bigger than the median size of the state of Kansas, a lot of districts see you as a big district, so that's really neat to see, so thank you for that comment. Alright, so I'll go to question three unless there's more comments. Question three now are the critical needs and challenges that you would want the new superintendent to understand and address. And on this one, I just asked him to come up with one or two critical needs. So once again, nothing really stood out, as you can see, four groups, now the reason there's a few different there, they only had one to two responses each group rather than the two to three, so there's fewer responses to be looked at. But, critical need would be open communication, top to bottom, bottom to top, whatever your definition of top to bottom, bottom to top is, more communication throughout the school district in that regard, consistency with the communication, student body would like to have, have, be allowed to have some opinions on the items that pertain to them, I'll let you decide which group that came from. And then staffing, if it had something to do with staffing, even though I see I have staff salaries down there and attract and retain a quality staff, so if I would've put those together now that I see that, maybe you had a little bit higher, might've went up to five tallies, but there's a lot of different things when it relates to staffing, salaries. One thing I heard, even though it may not have made the list, that during conversations is, the teaching staff would really like to have their teacher aides and para have a fair wage, so they can draw the best and keep them in the job rather than them quitting to go work at Dairy Queen, because they can work twelve months out of the year as opposed to ten months. So that was kinda neat to hear, the certified staff go to bat for the classified. I also know that you're not in charge of para salaries because of the co-op, so, but, something I thought was interesting. So, any comments from the board about the responses on question three? You can see facilities only had one group, and it was an early group, and I asked them if the board would have any idea what they meant by facilities, and at least at the high school, what they mentioned is, they don't have a lot of room for growth there, which I don't know if this is a surprise to the board or not. Having physical education in that activities class, or because of transportation, you know, by the time they get over there in dress, they're probably not getting full time in courses that are offered over there. It didn't, obviously only one group said it, but I wanted to make sure that I felt like you knew what they meant when they said facilities, because that's pretty broad, so.
I would think that the retaining or retention of staff and the, that should be more, a little bit higher, kinda up there with that staffing.
You know, you can see with three, one said staffing, and then if I would've put that one up there with staff salaries, it would probably be right up there, probably as your number one if I would've grouped those together, so. Yeah, I think you're probably right, that something to do with staffing and retaining and however you might do that by salaries, and probably be a little bit higher. Any other comments, thank you for that. Alright, so the last question was interesting, this is the separating qualities question, what would be the single trait you would hope the board would use to choose between one high-quality candidate and another? And this was now not a consensus by the group, that each individual got to have their own response, so there was, they could talk about it in the group, but you got to say what you wanted to say. So it's interesting, now once again, maybe if I was sorting these differently, but you can see the top responses, top three responses, had five different individuals, remember, not groups, say the following. They would like a superintendent that have a family-first mentality. The kids actually said, we want that person to have a young family. So, you know, I'd be cautious, but I wrote it down, it was important, I just don't want there to be some age discrimination of this, you know? And then also, once again, the positive people traits, we would all hope, you see, somebody that's genuine, somebody with strong, that has great positive people skills, being approachable, and then even if I happened to put those together, ethical, integrity and honest, those different terms came up five different times. If you look at, when you get the online survey on the last question, that one really rose to the top, and we'll talk about that when we get there. Something that was interesting, now I've done many of these, past experience as a superintendent, usually, now I didn't make it top four, but you can see it was number four, that's kind of unusual that I see that. Now, if I was doing the Dodge City or the Sina search, that makes sense, because they're, they go to one district level. Typically, that doesn't come up in a district that size, so I don't know if it's wrong or right, it was just something, it was an observation by somebody that does a lot of this, that three individuals said they'd like to have somebody with superintendent experience. Any surprises on the last question?
I'm curious on the comment that thoroughly vet the candidates, like if there was some more detailed background on that.
They, they, it was, it was a teacher group, and they wanted to make sure that the teachers got asked, got called as references to make sure, because teachers a lot of times have different opinions on superintendent's work than the board does, so, yeah. Alright, so with that said, let's go over the online survey. You had two hundred and forty-two responses, so congratulations on a great response to that. So I'd like to discuss with you what these look like, and if there's anything in there that maybe is a little bit unique, simply because I've done so many of these, I wanna make sure that you have an opportunity to see that. Becky, did you get one?
I brought mine.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so the first question simply is, what group best describes you? And as you can see, that forty-six percent of your respondents identified as a parent or a guardian. And that makes a lot of sense to me, because those people are really tied into your community, because they really care about the school system, because they have children within, so that's not an unusual response, a lot, that's almost always number one. Then teacher within a district, that makes sense, as you can see, twenty-four and a half percent of your respondents are teachers. Now, in this, if they read it the way we would hope they would read it, teacher means certified staff member, and then you can see employee within the district would be your classified staff members. So, community member and employee with the district is unusual, that exactly tied, you had thirty respondents from each of those subgroups. So, you had eight administrators do that, and you actually had four students that took the time to fill that out, so, I don't, you start to get a lot of zeros there, sometimes I'll have some kids, so congratulations to you, that your students did seem to be, not only a student app, but in the meeting that I met with them today. Question two, how long have you been associated with this community or school district? So as you can see, twenty-plus years, that thirty-four percent of your respondents claim to have lived in your community or been associated with three-three-one, four-four-one, four-three-one, four-three-one, twenty-plus years. And then once again, that almost always goes, next would be eleven and twenty, you can see you had a weird tie once again with four to ten, usually that's the other way around, it goes from the longest almost perfectly down. It's not always like that, but a majority, it's not, I don't think it's a big deal, maybe you do. One of the things, I did a recent district where they had a lot of growth in their district, in four to ten was the only one I've ever seen, that was the number one respondent, and my guess is it was a bunch of new move-ins that were childbearing age and have school-aged children, but that is extremely unusual, so yours to be, even though it's tied, it's kind of unusual it was that high. Question number three, because I was not meeting with folks individually on this, so I couldn't look them in the eye, that we gave them eight responses, and they had to prioritize these one through eight. Now, this is not unusual, so don't be upset at your community, you can, they always start dropping off, so only a hundred and eighty-four answered this particular question. If you would look on the far right, on the column that's labeled score, we're gonna call that a power score. Talking to our researcher when we started doing this, what's these scores really mean? Anything that is a six or higher is very significant. Now, even if your high might be a four, that doesn't mean it's not significant, because it is to your group, it's your number one, but anything over a six is really significant. So as you can see on your first question, your number one priority came as a five-nine-eight, so that's pretty dang significant. So, and that happens to be personal strength to do what's right regardless of circumstances. So if you look at those numbers and those percentages, forty percent of the individuals that answered the question, they had that one as their number two, one, and then you can see nineteen percent had it as their number two. Now, I don't know how the computer does, but it ranks that and then gives a power score. Number two, kids' first personality, a five-five-four. Number three, approachable, five-two-six. Now, I remember approachable being genuine kinda showed up on the last questionnaire from this morning, or today, so that may or may not be significant to you, but that kinda matches what we saw. I highlighted the first three. Now, I just highlighted it because you can see there's a pretty good-sized gap between the power score of three and four, but that does not mean the board couldn't say, we think number four is way more important than personal, you know, those are the things I wanna hear from you. If you tell me all eight of them are important, of which they are, it's gonna be really hard to match somebody to all eight of these, so that's why you're kinda being prioritized. So, looking at that, looking at the power score and how they were ranked, what would this board like to tell me? You feel comfortable with what you see here? Are there things that you would want me to be aware of, that I would maybe prioritize a little differently when I'm making phone calls?
Me personally, I would go ahead and bump transparency up on that list, since there's a pretty good demarcation between a four-point-eight and a four-point-one.
And if you do see a transparency skilled communicator or four and five, and you know, when I do that, I kinda put those together, I know they're different, and if you put those together, I'm sure they would rise higher to the top. Do the rest of the board hear that comment, and feel comfortable with that?
I would agree with her, because when we did our girls and stuff, that was a lot of what we heard, was transparency within the district.
Okay, appreciate that. Anybody else wanna comment on that, or something different on that particular question? The top three, do you feel comfortable with those, or those are something that are important to the board also? Personal strength, kids' first personality and approachable? Feel good about those?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we've added transparency and maybe the communicator part of that. Alright, question four. Question four now are the leadership qualities of your new superintendent, so once again, there is eight, and as you can see, the number one response prioritized with a power score of five-seven-four, efficient manager of resources and budget. Number two, with a fairly close score, community-oriented, involved with the community, that, in my humble opinion, kinda matches what I heard today with your community involvement, so they would like the superintendent to be part of that. And then number three, proactive forward thinker, was fairly close with a five-four-three, and then I only highlighted the top, highlighted the top three only because there's a fairly good gap between three or four, but once again, just because I didn't highlight it does not mean this board would tell me they wanna prioritize that a little bit higher, so please look at that, anybody has any comments for me, I would be interested in making notes to myself. I've seen a couple of heads nodding that they think pretty good there, so. Any comments before we go to the next page? Okay, question five is identified experiences of your next superintendent. And as you can see with the power score of five-three-six, experience with business and operations of the school district, so that, you might match that with your number one on the previous question. It's not exactly the same, but it, I think is close enough that we could say they're definitely influenced. Then number two, previous superintendent experience, so if you remember the comment, even though you only had three groups say that in the last, or maybe three individuals, I don't remember which question, and I said that was slightly unusual, that that came up pretty high on this particular question, so that seems to be of interest to your patrons and the staff I met with today. So once again, I hope you don't tell me we're only gonna interview people that have superintendents, because that may preclude, but that could be a tiebreaker too, you know, at some point, if you have really good candidates and you're having a hard time, somebody's gotta experience them, one doesn't. And then also unusual, number three, curriculum, usually does not show up quite that high, there's always a story that I probably don't know about, either your teachers are aware or your staff's aware that you need curriculum work, or they're not aware of the curriculum work you've been doing, whatever it is. So, any comments to me on those that came to the forefront on that question?
I like your idea of using the previous superintendent experience as a possible tiebreaker versus as a conclusionary.
Not a deal breaker.
Right, yeah.
Number two.
Yeah, I like, I like using it, yeah, like you said, not a, not a deal breaker, but a tiebreaker.
Yeah, how this, the timing and everything of what we're probably, you know, gonna get as far as that's concerned.
Right. I'm really wondering if on number three, if they really focus more on the second part of that, experience with instruction leadership?
Could be, because they're put in there to get, and we don't know if they're answering, because both of those are one or the other.
Right.
Yeah, so that's, and your board, or potentially your principals may have a better feel for that than maybe even you folks, but putting you on the spot, Jill, curriculum and instruction, are you working on that, or do you feel like?
That's our second goal with these people now, yeah, first one's curriculum, a lot of it, so.
Because we, we know that your biggest percent of people did this was community members, so you know, we don't, you know, teachers, that might give you a different feel for it too. Okay, so I've kinda highlighted previous superintendent experiences for me to be aware of, that might be, might be important to you somewhere down the line. So, question six, as you can see, that is where pretty much anybody gets, wants to write what they want to write, so the board gets to see every comment that's unredacted, so I put those in there. As you can see, that a hundred and forty-two individuals took the time to, to put a question in there. I would highly suggest that board members read through that if you have not. I've done kind of a synopsis of all of those comments to see if we can come up with some general themes and see what you feel about that. So, reviewing all of that, that the key themes that came out were community engagement, does that surprise anybody, and maybe you haven't had a chance to read all those comments, but seeing some of the other survey results, does that surprise you, community engagement seemed to be? And these themes are in rank order, by the way, they're not just randomly put in there.
No, that was in line with the strategic workshops that we had for the strategic plan.
Absolutely, I think that's, I think that's good for the public to see that you want their input, and they probably appreciated that, yep, absolutely, you bet. So then number two, with twelve mentions, were student-focused leadership, so many of those responses noted that the new superintendent should prioritize students' needs and success. Now, I'm sure they weren't all written that pretty in the comments, but can you disagree with that, board, that, that comment? Number two.
No, no.
We'll concentrate on student needs. Support structures came in at number three, there's a strong interest in the superintendent supporting staff, teachers and the district as a whole. As I, I think that goes to those ones that I kept singly, but if we would've put those together, those probably would've matched those particular, that particular comment. And then staff relations, building trust and morale among the staff was highlighted as essential. And then I just highlighted the top five, and that last one was communication, even though communication was really high on today's group, you can say really, it's really number five as it relates to the hundred and forty-two different comments. But, now I didn't highlight the last three, because I thought there was kind of a gap, it doesn't mean they're not important by any means, but once again, you start getting eight things you're trying to identify, you start having a hard time identifying anything. So, if all of those eight key themes, do you like the weighting or the way they are put in prioritization, or would you say, I think number five needs to be one, or something like that? I'm open to whatever discussion or comments this board would like to make.
I think the transparency and trust needs to be higher.
Yeah, I'm agreed with that.
And that kinda goes with the comment we had a little bit earlier, yeah.
I, I think that that one also ties into the staff relations too.
Yeah, and even the communication, I mean. Right, that if those, all three could tie in together.
Okay. Is community still important to this board, engagement, community support, if however that's fine, that's important?
I have any argument that that should not be number one, but I just, everyone always.
It's a strength that you have, and you would want the new superintendent to continue to support that and build on that, to get the things that need to be done, a lot easier when you have community support. Alright, so they're hard to, any of those are hard to disagree with, but. So I've highlighted the following, community engagement, staff relations, communication, transparency, trust and culture. Okay, alright. So let's finish up the last question after all of these comments, please review those on your own. Question number seven really relates to question number four that was asked today, the single trait, and I, we almost need to change this, because I've done a hundred and sixty-five of these, and everyone is always, and what your number one is, is always number one. Now, we can't disagree with that, I mean, you all, you want a superintendent that has those traits. But with a far second, kids first, student-centered leadership, and you can see, they started getting some fairly small responses off the farther you get down there. When honesty and integrity kept coming up so much today, I had to tell them I was thinking about applying, but I'm no longer eligible, because that tone of honesty is getting me. Survey feel comfortable with that last question, I know it's pretty generic, I do understand that? Okay. Appreciate that feedback. So Mrs. Mooney, may I continue down the line on what my checklist is?
Absolutely.
Alrighty. Alright, so let's look at salary comparison, so that you folks will have some ideas of where we're at on salary and benefits. So, one of the things I would remind the board, if I hadn't said it the first time, is the board should have some sort of a discussion on a salary range. And I'm gonna throw a really bad one out there, so you don't think I'm recommending this, but it would be good if they would take it, that we're willing to pay somewhere between sixty and eighty thousand for the superintendent. Now, that may be too wide of a range, it may not, whatever, but if the board has a range identified, that last interview, and you're gonna make a, an offer to one of your candidates, if you haven't thought about a range, what has happened in the past, that boards get really excited, and then they offer more than they ever imagined they would, and then you have kind of buyers, oh my gosh, we just offered that person whatever, and if you would've had some time to think about that before, you would've had some time to consider that and make the offer that you're really, really comfortable with. We'll talk more about that the next meeting, on how to make the offer, and where that could change depending on the candidate, alright? I will inform you when I come back, each candidate, how much they're currently making, and how much they would anticipate making in Hoysington, so that can be part of your discussion. Also, you do not have to offer every candidate the same amount, that's up to the board, because some, because you're probably gonna pay on experience and some of those types of things, but we'll talk more about that. So, on the first page of this salary comparison, there are two hundred and eighty-six school districts. Your district size of those two hundred and eighty-six, you are one hundred and fifteenth largest. So you can see here in the top half of the state, I know that sounds surprising, but the median-sized district is right at five hundred, the middle, not the average, the middle district of two eighty-six, and you folks are about seven fifty to eight hundred, And you folks are about 750 to 800 probably. So you can see you're the 115th largest school district in the state of Kansas. Your superintendent's salary is 162nd. Remember, I'm not here to make judgments. It's just information for you to consider. Your fringe is a little bit higher. If you just look at fringe benefit packages, 113th. I will admit that when we request that, we do not know what that means in this district to Great Bend because every fringe is a little bit different. And we know it's almost always going to be health insurance because there'd be a lot of other things included in there. So we can't define that for you very well and I wish we could, but we cannot. If you put superintendent salary and fringe together, it stays right at 162. In your KASB region of the 26 school districts, you're number eight. That's one of the worst ways because there's the smallest of the small districts in there and then the great bins and the hazes of the world. So it's a hard comparison. Of your 3A classification, and I know you're 3A in some sports and maybe 2A in others, but in 3A, you're 46 out of, I believe there's 64 3A schools nowadays. Things have changed since I've done it, so. And then of your nine league schools, you can see where you're ranked in the league schools. All right, so that's information for you to consider. The next page is, I want to make sure that you understand how to read this page. So if you notice, if you would count those, there happens to be 41 school districts. Hoysington is right in the middle, so we've chosen the 41 school districts. So the 20 school districts that have the 20 next larger enrollments and the 20 districts that have the next largest. So these are the 41 districts clustered the closest by enrollment. So that gray column is the enrollment category. So everybody kind of understanding that. So if you can look, you can see that Lyons is the district that's the next largest in the state to you. Riley County is the district that's the next smallest district. So you can look at the salary and salary and friends of those 41 school districts, just to see if you really are interested by size. The next page is the annual salary. So that is the gray column off to the right. You see, once again, we put the 41 school districts that their annual salary or their base salary is clumped together. The 41 districts that have the most common base salary. So that's why Hoysington is always in the middle. So you can see the next salary that's directly higher and actually is the same, exact same salary as Southern Lion. And the one that's exactly one smaller is Holton USD 338, which you can look at their enrollments and you can look at all of that. So it may or may not be good information, but at least you're looking at like size schools, districts that have similar base salaries. The next one is your salary and fringe in combination. So once again, Hoysington in the middle, this is based on the gray column on the far right. So you can see the 20 districts that are physically higher on the page or the 20 districts that are slightly greater based upon salary and fringe. And the 20 that are listed below are the 20 districts that are the next closest, but lower than the Hoysington. The next page is your KASB region, so it's a little different. You're no longer in the middle. This is an actual rank and that is based upon your salary and fringe, the far right. And then you can see the 3A classification. And you can see that that is also based on salary and friends, not just the base salary. And then lastly, of the nine schools, I believe nine in the Central Kansas League, you're ranking in that and that is salary and fringe put together. So no judgments by KASB, but we want this to be in your hands. So when you start thinking about that salary friend, salary range, that you can be, at least in your own mind, competitive to get the people here that you want them to be. You don't have to be the highest paid. You don't have to be the lowest. It's whatever you feel comfortable. Most of your best candidates will know what you currently pay. And a lot of times we'll see anticipated salary, it almost always matches what your current soup, unless they're wanting to come to Hoysington. Because it's where they really, it's where they've been waiting for it to open up for the last five years and they're taking a pay cut. They may want to not take as much of a pay cut, so they may see that, so. But you'll have that information. So this is information for the board's consideration, right? The next thing I would like to review with you is to start looking at what an interview day may look like. Tricia, do you have those, that you pass those out to the board? Well, I think I have them too. Did you make them?
What do you want? A question? I'm sorry. Do you want that scenario? Yeah.
So what I'm showing you is the interview schedule that you use with Mr. Crowdes, I believe. And that's kind of by memory. Is that correct, Mr. Crowdes?
Yeah.
All righty.
So there may be a little variation on the time.
Yeah, there's some things on here I'd like to review with you. Nothing illegal, nothing on that to call. That's really good news. So it appears that you had the candidates appear in your district at 11:30 and then they had lunch with your district office staff and your admin team. You missing one? And, and that's a great idea. So Becky, when you call the candidates, and we'll talk about this again, if you end up using this schedule, you would say, we, when you show, we'd like you to show up at 11:30 and there will be a lunch for you that way, when they're driving through Gray Bend on their way, do we need to grab a hamburger or something? You're taking care of them. You're taking that question off of their chest, being a little bit nervous. So, but we'll talk about that again next week. So nothing wrong with that. Approximately 12:30 to 3:30 would be the tour of Hoysington. We would highly recommend that a tour guide be chosen and that tour guide, best case scenario would be the same person for every interview. So that they're seen exactly, even though you have certain things listed, that would be the best idea. We would just give you for your consideration not to use a board member in that. Could be a retired board member, it could be a retired teacher, could be if you have a involved chamber of commerce, it could be your chamber of commerce director. You know, in the larger districts, that's what their job is, is to tour the big leagues around and show them the things. Probably need to decide on that fairly quickly, you know, maybe tonight at some point, so you can see if, if you can come to consensus on who that might be if they're willing to do that. So you can get them on the schedule. So the things that you wrote down for them to see on the tour are wonderful, wonderful. I want to make sure when it says all four buildings, that that's not a drive by, that's an actual visit within the buildings. So each of your four buildings, the tour guide would take them to wherever they're going and then usually pass them off to the principal at that point. That doesn't mean the tour guide can't follow along, but then it's up to the principal to do the, the tours at that point. One thing I mentioned this morning, I've heard a couple of candidates say, one of the things they really liked about districts they were interviewing for is that in some districts, they had kids give the tour. Not that the principal wasn't there to maybe add in some details, but when a sophomore girl says, oh, you got to go see this English class, it's awesome. That really carries a lot of weight to the candidate rather than the principal saying that. So it's not a make or break in any way, but if you think you have some kids that would be up to that and they might have to be given a little lesson, you know, here's some things we want them to see. You might remember to talk about this wonderful program we have at the high school or middle school. Elementary might not work as well. I mean, it'd be cute and probably would be nice, but that's up to you.
They have a minimum time link. She could keep them there all day.
I did have a candidate that was interviewing in two districts at the same time or within the same time period. And they were very similar districts to the outsider. And I said, why, why did you choose one over the other? God, just got down to, the kids led the tour and I was so impressed that they were so excited about their school. Not that your principals aren't excited, but it's just different. So something to consider. If you can do it, it's not a make or break by any means. So the activity center, wonderful Rotomex, all of those businesses that you're showing, that would be great to walk around. You may not have time to go in and introduce of the CEOs or whoever, but it might say, you know, the CEO of Essex is really important to our community. We should hope you go meet him or her at some point because those folks are important to your community. So you want to do that. Another thing for your consideration on this tour, if you happen to have some homes for sale, you know, you might discreetly drive by the homes that you think a superintendent might be interested in. I don't know what your housing market, if it's like every little town, it's pretty tight, I would imagine. So that might be another thing for your consideration.
Barry, I have a question on that. One of the things that Senator Moran always does when he comes to Hoysington is does a walk down Main Street. Is that something like, I know that that's always stood out in his like.
Yeah, you absolutely, you can do that. It's just gets to be a time factor.
Yeah.
You know, what, if we're going to do that, are we going to have to not do something else? But it is important. You can't probably go into every storefront and say hi, unfortunately, but the, now a lot of the candidates, Mr. Moran's not doing this, but a lot of your candidates are going to show up a week in advance and they're going to do their own reconnaissance. I've heard a lot, well, I walked down Main Street and I happened to talk to the flower shop owner and they said, it's a great place to be, great. So I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but I think your better candidates will already be in the district.
Mr. Mason, I just thought about that because we do our senior walk where everybody goes down and gets the snowballs at the end of graduation and they walk through all the businesses and that's always a big.
It's a big deal.
A big deal for all the kids.
And with your community engagement, I'm sure your downtown businesses would enjoy that. So it's something to consider. It's just a time factor.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so 3:30 to 4 o'clock is downtime. So here's a consideration. We do not recommend one way or the other if they bring a guest. Now, their guest most likely is a spouse, but I'm going to have to act like I don't know they're married. So, you know, when you call, if you want them to bring somebody, we'd love for you to bring a guest. And a lot of times they'll say, oh, great, I'll bring my wife or my husband. And then you kind of know something you're not supposed to know. But once again, if you wish them to do that, great. If they bring a guest, please, please consider this, they would be involved in everything but the formal interview. Which means, so they would be from the 11:30 through the dinner and then they would be excused at the dinner. So then what does that person do for the time that you're holed up in a room interviewing them? So a lot of boards have chosen, go ahead and get a room, even if they don't spend the night there. You know, unless you have a nice place for them to go, sitting out here in the commons area may not be very fun for two hours. So it's something to consider. So Trish, you know, the board may say, go ahead and reserve a room. And I know it's a hundred dollars, but it might be a hundred dollars well spent because you're taking care of that person's spouse and it might be a good one.
Didn't we do that last time? That way they had somewhere to go and check emails and freshen up too.
So from four to five o'clock or from four until concluded, a meet and greet. For sure, your staff should be invited if you wish to invite your public. That's up to you. There's no right or wrong to that. But if you have a local radio station or a local newspaper, you know, that might be a good invite to be at the meet and greet also, so they could talk to those folks later. So then your dinner at 5:30 approximately, it looks like that you may have it at a local restaurant. That is absolutely no problem at all. But that is an executive session. So the reason that's an executive session is that you don't want a bunch of patrons around listening to your candidate, tell them about their three children or what church they get, whatever it happens to be. That's just not public information yet. But the dinner is a great time, you know, when I break bread with somebody, that's when I really have an opportunity to know more about them. That's when they share with you the things that you can't ask, you know, how many kids you got, are you married? What church do you go to? You know, all those types of things. They, they'll share many of those things with you during that informal board time. So there's some things on here I want to make sure I'd like to review with you. First of all, as I said, that's an executive session. Will you have the interview at the restaurant or will you recess and come up here?
We'll recess and come back here.
So I would recommend two separate executive sessions. You could have one, but it's just awkward. You got that 10 or 15 minute time in between when you're coming up. So I would recommend a rec, excuse me, a motion for non-elected personnel for whatever time, 45 minutes. And then when you get back up here for the interview, you have another executive session for non-elected personnel. You have some things written down here I'd like to discuss. I would, I would like for you to consider not having your spouses at the dinner. It's just kind of an, it's an awkward getting them there. Some of you may or may not be married. That's either a big deal or not a big deal. We've heard from the candidates, we have done that for, probably since you guys did it. It's really kind of the candidates are, well, who's making the decision, the spouses or the board member? You know, the spouses are asking, you know, that type of thing. So I'd like for you to consider not including the spouses. It's not illegal. You are in executive session and this is awkward for me to say because we trust our spouses, but they're not held to the same standard of confidentiality as you as board members. So I hate to be the bad person to say that, but I hope you understand I'm coming from a good spot when I say that or I wish to be coming. So it's a lot easier not having to worry about spouses and daycare or babysitters and all those types of things. The clerk probably needs to be up there because she has to take the motion and the time if you're going over. I would also recommend that she's not part of the dinner, but she's got to be there as the clerk. We've already talked, so this is not a surprise to her. But once again, it's not illegal. If you wish to have her included, she's a great person. She's going to be very good, so it's up to the board. I'm not going to second guess it if you wish to, if you just do have her eat. You might want to order a meal if she's not in there because she's going to be hungry.
I just figured I would start it and then come back here.
So and then your interview will be in here. Is that correct? So your plan, so approximately 6:30, so that is wonderful. Looks like you have that. So you might talk about tonight, lodging, whether they want to spend it or not, or spend the night there or not. Usually Becky, the next call, when you call the candidates, we would love to provide lodging after your interview. At this point, I don't see anybody coming from a long distance, but sometimes if they have to be there 11:30, you offered the night before, but I don't think that's going to be the case. Some of them will accept it and some of them say, no, we don't need it. Once again, you may do it just because you want them to have a place to hang out. And then during the interview, if there's a guest, they have a place to hang out for an hour and a half or two hours during your formal interview. So it's something to consider.
But even if we find that out Monday night, I told him our hotel, it's not like hunting season or Labor Day, like I would be able to call Tuesday morning and probably.
I think that's another selling point though, is that the family that runs the hotel, it was started by community members. The family that runs it is lovely. They have like the duck blind if somebody wants to go hang out, you know, get a movie or a drink or something like.
Great mission to your community when they built that 20 years ago. Yeah. Okay. So the last thing that I really would like to visit with you about, and then whatever questions you might have, because once again, I've done enough of these. I sometimes worry I go too fast, that you're not catching this. So interview questions. Now, we're getting to the point, remember deadline for applications is Wednesday and then I come back next Monday. So things are getting compressed, so there's a lot of things that have to get done. Interview questions. So I usually don't want to talk about this on the first night, so I didn't. I wait till the second, but now we're really on a time crunch. You could spend the next four hours here and I don't think you want to try to go through all of those questions and you're advocating for this question and she doesn't want it and you want that. So what I would recommend is becoming very, very common, is I have sent Tricia an electronic record of all of the 75 questions in the back of the book, way more than you would ever ask. She also has a hard copy, so whatever your preference is, but what I would recommend, I'm going to use you Becky as an example. If you were the only board member in the interview, what would be the 21 questions you would want to ask? So you're going to identify those questions, you're going to send those to Tricia either by electronically. You don't have to write them out and say, I want question one B, two C, two D, three A, whatever. When all seven board members get those to Tricia, she will tally those. And then the 21 questions with the most tallies end up being the 21 questions. Why do we come up with 21 questions? Another thing that we think is good practice is rather than Becky asking every question during the interview, is that each board member has a chance to ask questions, so that will be three questions per board member. You also get to see the opportunity of the candidate interacting with each board member rather than just staring at the board president. So that's something for your discussion, but 21 questions is what we would recommend. So if that's what you would like, I've kind of given Tricia a heads up on that. You know, usually this is a couple of weeks, so it's quickly. Is there a day that you would really like the board members to get their questions to you?
I'd probably like to work on it Thursday. Like if you could have them all to me like by the end of day, like in, by the end of the night, Wednesday night, like Thursday and start tallying and working on them.
Gotcha.
And you just want us to email those to you?
You can either email them if you want to like circle them on here and give them some, I mean, I don't care how you communicate them to me. If it's easier to email them, if it's easier for you to like fill them out on me, like just circle them and bring them in to me. Like I, I don't care how you communicate them to me. I can deal with however you want it to look. I don't care.
You did get the email. I sent to the electronic version, so you can.
Yeah, because I printed this from there.
Gotcha. Another thing, when you're, when each board member's identi- Another thing, when you're, when each board member's identifying those questions, so Neil, I'll use you as an example. Now that you have a pretty good feel for the characteristics. You know, if you want a great communicator, you ought to ask questions about communication, if you want an instructional leader, you need to ask those questions, so. Consider that, that's why we really don't wanna do this until after the characteristics, so consider that when you're choosing your twenty-one questions. If you would give Tricia the autonomy on those questions to assign a board member, so usually the board president asks question number one. Number two is your vice pres- who happens to be your vice president. And then if you would just give her the autonomy to assign those questions. And then Monday night, uh, when I come back to make those recommendations, you can hand those back. And that way, Mr. Patterson, you know, here's the three questions that you're gonna ask, so you're not seeing it for the first time on interview night. So that's why we're kinda working you kinda hard here.
So I, so I tallied the twenty-one, but then I assigned, who asks what questions?
Yeah, so typically, as I said, Becky would do number one, Sarah do number two, and then what would that be? Question number eight or nine would come back to her, and you might write their names off to the side, that way they know, okay, that's my question. That make sense? Give me a call tomorrow if you need some help on that. Okay? The last thing that I'd like to bring up, and then whatever questions you might have. Uh, since we have met, uh, did your last superintendent search, we've added, added what we call stakeholder feedback. So the only group I would recommend that you consider letting have feedback to you on the candidates would be that group that's meeting with them at eleven thirty. To twelve thirty, because that's gonna be the same group every day. I do not recommend the meet and greet group, not that they're not great people, but it's gonna be different people. Uh, they're only making a decision based on a thirty to forty-five minute canned talk. So what the, the feedback form is, is the characteristics of which you've chosen will be on that. And then off to the side, the, the people, so for example, I'll use Mr. Mason, he'll be in that group. At the end of that meeting, he'll write down, this is candidate number one, their name. Uh, communication, meet standard, exceeds, does not meet, could not tell. So, let's say there's ten people in that group. Tricia will get those app- after each meeting, we would prefer not them to go home with it or go to work because. They're likely to talk to their, what you, what are you gonna say on that, needs to be an individual, she may or may not, but at the end of each interview, she'll hand those to you. Here was the feedback on candidate number one, here, this is for you, and then you can see, gosh, they seem to exceed standards on every one of those according to that. Once again, you get to make the tough decision, but a lot of boards have really, uh, liked the idea of getting a little bit of feedback. Uh, we really don't like the idea of them, uh, numbering them, this was my top candidate, this was my fourth candidate. Because what they see is your number one, you may see as the number four. And honestly, you're gonna hear a lot more about the candidate simply because I'm gonna be sharing the strengths and weaknesses with you on that, so. But we think the feedback form is valuable, I will put that together for you if the board likes that idea, so. Uh, I don't know if you wanna have some discussion, uh, so I'll know if you wish to have that, so I'll have it ready for you next Monday.
I like the idea of your input too, so I think, yeah.
So I'll have that ready for you, and I'll have it, so you don't have.
I think last time it was nice too, when we were like down to a couple, like, you know.
Although Patrick was definitely your number one choice. Alright, so that's all I have on my formal presentation, and once again, I wanna make sure you all feel comfortable. Tricia and I've had some good conversations on some of the things she'll be doing behind the scenes for you. So here's some things to remind, uh, tell her if you want lodging or not, uh, whether they stay or not. A salary range would be good, you can do that in executive session. Now, when you decide on what you're gonna pay, that immediately, as soon as it's on a contract, is public information. But to decide the range can be under the terms of negotiation, so you, if you wanted to, you could talk about that in an executive session. Simply because that's kinda secret information until it's released. But as soon as I get hired at whatever salary, that is now public information. Because that is salaries of public employees is, is information that can be had. You're gonna get your interview questions back to Tricia by hopefully Wednesday evening, if some of you are really good at doing it quickly. And before that, I'm sure she would take it early and at least get started on that. Um, I will be on Monday, when I come back, I think maybe five o'clock, if I remember right, but I'm, I'll look again. I will have, all of the applications will be printed out and belong to you, so we will go over every applicant, I don't hide anything from you. I will tell you the strengths and the challenges of each of the candidates, and then I will recommend to you, and once again, it is a recommendation. The board gets to decide who they're going to interview. And my recommendations will be based upon the characteristics, my phone calls, and what me and my colleagues know about each of these candidates.
You will be here at six, I'm okay.
Six o'clock is the start time, okay, thank you, Tricia.
That's when we're starting next Monday.
Uh, question is, coming up, um, are candidates given, sorry, this is getting into what I do for a living. Um, are candidates given like a schedule with contacts?
Yeah, thank, we'll say this now, but I would plan on Thursday, so. When Becky makes the phone calls to the candidates that you say we want to interview, she'll call that night. Really, all she would have to say at that point is, we really would like you, you to be here at eleven thirty, we will be meeting with our group, there will be a lunch, here's the address. Our clerk, now maybe because the interview's potentially the very next day, you might have to send it. But our clerk will follow this conversation up with an email with the full schedule.
Trish, if you want help coming up with a pretty stylized interview that's got letterhead or anything like that, let me know, and I, I can throw that together for you.
Yeah, a lot of times the phone calls are being made, and there's two or three days, but you folks, it's possible. Now, did I, if I remember right, the board is choosing or would prefer not to interview Thursday, Friday, and Monday, is that correct?
Yes.
Cause there's no school on at least one or two of those days.
We're out of school on Friday and Monday.
Yeah, holy Thursday, good Friday, so, yes.
So was there a board member that couldn't be here for Thursday? In my mind, oh, okay. Yeah. I was thinking Thursday was one that we would prefer not.
Tuesday, Wednesday, the first week, and then possibly Tuesday.
It's really hard to, it's not fair to the candidates if they don't interview during school, cause one interviews during school, they get to feel the liveliness, and then. Then you interview another one with the hallways are dark or whatever, so it's really hard.
So, yeah, that works for the board, probably Tuesday, Wednesday in the first week, and then if we need another Tuesday, possibly Wednesday.
Would it be your recommendation for us to rack and stack order of interviews versus availability?
So I will call the candidates, and I will say this, I want you to hear what I say, so you don't think. The ones that I think, I, on, ones I know I'm gonna recommend to you, I will call them. And I will say this, I will introduce myself, I know who I am, that the screening team believes you to be a top candidate. I did not say the board believes you to be the top candidate, but before I bring your name forth, I need to have the following questions answered. You still have interest in this position, and that's one of the reasons we're calling. Cause about, all of a sudden, you would call and can't, gee, I took my name out, no you didn't, but, yeah, it's kinda embarrassing. Secondly, these are the interview dates, can you make these work? You're gonna have to make anyone work, but because I'm nice, I'm gonna attempt to, if you say I've got a son or daughter on Tuesday nights, it's got their very last. Senior solo, I will at least tell you about that, if you can make that work, please do. And then lastly, if you're the fortunate candidate, are you willing to move into the school district? So, I will only do those to the candidates of which I'm gonna recommend. Because I don't wanna do that to candidates I'm not recommending, cause now they think they're gonna get a phone call and they're not. I need to be the bad guy, not the board, that's what you're paying me for. So.
Is there a disadvantage where we're splitting it into two different weeks?
There is a disadvantage, yeah. It'd be nice if you could do it Thursday, but it's also nice to have all seven board members, and I understand, I'm not trying to pick on Mr. Patterson, it's just. It's a very important decision, now, if he says, you know, I'm okay with the six of you, that's okay, but at the same time, whether you wanna put him in that spot or not. It would be nice, now, I will tell you, there's another district of similar size, that's on the other side of the state. Their timeline is exactly the same as yours, and they're probably gonna be interviewing on Thursday. And you got two applications today, and one of them's good. And I haven't looked, but I'm going to guess that person might be applying for that other job too. So I, and if I know they're interviewing elsewhere, I will tell you. Yeah, I mean, if we're doing the search, I will know, if they're doing their own, I won't know, but I will tell you. So I don't know about that candidate, but I just know that candidate well enough to know that. The other search is an area which he would like to be, not that he wouldn't like this too, but, so you're gonna be competing if he's applied for that other job too.
Considering that should, uh, one of the things that Mr. Kravis had sent out was to consider an accelerated timeline. Where we interviewed on Monday, then Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
You mean, next Monday?
Yeah, and switching up our special meeting dates.
Not be able to be here in time to make the recommendations, yeah, sorry. And our deadline is Wednesday, and then there's possibly some people waiting to hit the deadline that last day, and then. Then I'm gonna be trying to make reference calls in a day's time to get with you, and that's, it's doable, but it's. Hard to get everybody to call you when you can't get ahold of them, so.
Okay, so the schedule we've set currently is the best for your schedule and our fix, our current timeline.
The district I'm referring to, or it's hearing of their candidates the same night I'm telling you about your candidates. And they will be interviewing Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, possibly depending on their quality of candidates. Now, once again, I don't know if that person, I just know he applied, I didn't look at that other job yet, but I will tell you Monday, if you have some common candidates.
Are you allowed to ask when you call and talk to the candidates if they have a preference, like, are they?
I, I will usually ask them, why did you apply here, and why did you apply at the other place, I've noticed you've applied both, tell me what you're looking at. And a lot of them are really honest, I wanna get back into this area of the state. Hoyseton's closer than the other district to my kids, or the other district closer to my kids in Hoyseton, but this is a good start to get there, so. Yeah, you, I'll, I'll tell you everything I can tell you.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't hide anything. Yeah.
Nope. Okay.
Okay, good luck, so I'll see you Monday, did you say six o'clock, Tricia? And if for some reason you have other questions tonight, I know you have your regular board meeting, feel free to call me.
Okay.
Um, I'll roll my eyes, but I will answer.
Okay, at least you're honest.
I am honest, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I apologize, guys, I got hung up by a couple of coaches at my house before, so.
Can we talk, since we have time, since our other meeting's on, we're gonna start tonight. Can we talk about any answers to these questions, so I can start setting things up and getting ahold of people, and. So, can I get answers to some of these questions on the, um.
Sure.
On the timeline? I need to know who you would like to do the tour, I know you guys threw some names out there last time, but I need to know who you guys would like me to reach out to. To see about doing the tours.
Well, I did talk with Dean and Becky in Iraq, and they said that they would be mad they haven't had to do it.
Thanks.
See you, see you, Mr. Kravis, see you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, I won't.
If they're fine with doing it, I mean. I'm perfectly comfortable.
I do have a daughter.
The Rotomex, the Essex, those things, do we really want them to tour them out there? Or I think it might be better to have those CEOs come to the meet and greet.
I would, and you could do a drive-by.
Maybe just order an invitation to them, just.
Or just, I mean, maybe they could meet them at the facility, at the building, but.
Just talk to.
Yeah, not a full one tour, just maybe talk to the CEO.
I think that the main.
Cause I think the main focus. Right, I agree, cause you know, even Patrick mentioned, he felt like Essex was long.
Right.
Well, right, and like you said, it is more important to. Spend time.
I would, I would highly encourage us, like, getting a list of priority people to, um. Um, to invite to me. Yeah. I'd be willing to help, like, design an invitation for a public meet and greet that could be sent out to some key individuals like. Representatives from Essex, representatives from the hospital, like, I, Trish, I would. Be completely willing to, to, uh, help with that process.
Yeah.
Um, cause I think that that's a good, like, hey, we're interviewing candidates, we're gonna do a drive-by because of time, but. We would love to get your involvement to talk more about your operation.
Does that help?
Or if it just stays here. How can we, how can we be helpful to you?
Um, you're fine, I, so I just, I don't know, I guess I was, I mean, I can ask, I could get ahold of Becky and talk to her, and just kinda ask like how they did things last time.
Yeah, and then, um.
And just let them know.
Just have them know dates.
Yeah.
You know, and if we're gonna try and do the three, just so we can be, I don't know.
Okay, and then, so. Cause I'll just need to tell them like what is expected, and like, what places to take them, like, do you want them to have a tour of Claire Martin? And not Rotomex and Essex, do you, are you the same, but you just want them to meet the CEO of Claire Martin? Like, how do you, like, how do you feel about the hospital?
I would encourage to, just a drive-by of all the businesses, but then, like. And then having an invitation to the public meet and greet, and making sure that those. That key people from the administration in each of those businesses know that we'd really like them to come and interact and talk more. And sell the community.
Yeah, and I think Dean and Becky would be able to tell you a lot more about what they did.
I do, I do, Mr. Bronhart, Mr. Mason, the idea of the students participating in the tours, I don't know if you guys are open to that, or.
Absolutely.
Looks like you get some logins in there, right?
So I guess I'll need, and Mrs. Walker, Mrs. Cowan, like, if you would like. We almost need to be in the accordion rooms, you can shut it. Another side.
Clearly, we're.
But we did not, the first room has an open door.
We like the back.
Yeah, the large back room.
So we were in the, we were in the room with, that has the.
I, I don't know how other people feel, I'm totally okay with providing a room at the hotel, like, that's.
We at least need to reserve it.
Yeah, and I think I could do that Tuesday morning even, I don't feel like it's gonna be.
Right, right, because that way I would know after we talked to him on the phone, like, what if they're gonna stay the night or just do it for the day. Well, and I think too that inviting them to come to the meet and greet too, since, you know, that is another selling point.
So I need to know if you guys want me to send meet and greet invitations to.
Do you want me, do you want us to sit and all kinda send you like names of who they, with contact information and who we think would be important?
I would just do the chamber.
There's some, there's some people that aren't chamber members, so.
Right, but you're gonna know, I would just look at it, I guess.
Karen would be able to help us compile a good list too, but do you want help compiling that list?
It's just gonna be a lot, because I'm doing, uh, Taylor's out this week, she's having surgery, and so I'm. Actually doing her job, plus my payroll, plus this, so like, it's gonna be a lot for me to get invitations together for businesses. I mean, I can figure it out and make it happen, but.
If you want me to design one that could be consistent with invitation, maybe even just a flyer. Yes, hey, we're having a meet and greet.
And if you did just do, I guess my thing too is you just, if you do just do chamber, like, I'm afraid you're gonna leave a business out that's gonna be offended.
Right.
So like, if you did just do.
That would give you a basis of who and then.
Say like, add, send it to chamber members.
And I, yeah, I mean, when you do contact the chamber, I feel like Karen can do. Like, say that for.
I can reach out to.
I brought my wrong laptop, so, you know what I mean?
So I just need to know what you guys want me to do, if you want me to.
If, if I can design it in about fifteen minutes, um, as long as you'll send me a lo- if you'll email me a logo file, I can sit here and design it in between meetings. Like, that is not a problem.
I will try that, Patrick, can you send her the logo file?
And if, um, if you want me to help work with the chamber, I am perfectly willing to like, help try to compile a list. Like, I'm, I'm willing to help.
It's my job, so I don't feel like I need to push it off.
But if it's helpful for me to, if it's helpful for me to help compile the list, and you send the email, and I think here's the list of emails. And then we all. and you send the email, and I think here's the list of emails, and then we all throw up a Google Doc or something, and make sure that there's nobody off the list, and then.
Yeah, just let me know, and I'll, and I'll get it pushed out to, like, whatever you need to do.
I mean, Jessica, you're, are you still on chamber?
No.
Actually, okay, so.
I would just, I would put it in the paper, and have Karen put it on the chamber e-blast and be done on Facebook. Facebook, be done, like, I don't think it needs to be anything official, or.
No, I don't either, just.
Just.
I still think it would be nice to do some invitations to keep, because we do have community support as such a strong tenet of everything.
It's up to you guys, though, I don't think it's necessary.
I don't think enough people read the papers is the problem, like, there, I know several people who don't.
No, but I know that our community knows that we're doing this, it's been out on Facebook, everybody knows.
Could we not post it on Facebook?
Right, yeah.
We can do that.
Because then again, we get into the, if you send a formal invitation to five people, and you don't send a formal invitation to the other twenty.
I think it's just because we're such a shortened timeframe, we just need to get it out there as quickly as we can, and to the masses that we can. So, paper, social media sites.
A lot of people get great posts.
Yeah.
Karen, do the email or the e-blast, that goes out to every business, no matter what the chamber member.
For the comments area to use for the meet and greet?
Yeah, it should. Is it, what, what day is on?
It would be next Tuesday, Wednesday.
Or do we need to do it at the, set it up at the rec center, too, at the activity center, if there's a conflict?
I mean, hospitals, uh, next week?
Yeah, Tuesday, Wednesday, and possibly Thursday.
Yeah, Tuesday's fine, Wednesday's fine.
And then the following Tuesday, possibly.
And then the following Tuesday? Not Thursday the seventeenth, right?
Right, possibly.
Fifteen, sixteen. Yeah. I'm in, I'm in class holiday.
And then, yeah.
Fifteen, sixteen, the twenty-second?
Yes.
Yes.
They're all fine.
Okay, and you're okay with four to five?
Yes.
And then, are you, you guys just want cookies and drinks, that's what they've done in the past, are you good with that? And I'll probably just have Opa do that?
Yep.
If you guys are.
Perfect.
Opa? So, yeah, just decide on, like, so if you, really, if you wanted to create something.
Yep, I'm working on it right now.
And then get it to me, and then we'll just push it out to everything we can push it out to tomorrow.
Perfect.
Sounds good. Is that all you have?
The meet, who do, who, so who, after his, what he said, who, who is going to be at ATR, so I know who.
I'm okay with not having, having young kids at home, um, I'm okay with not having spouses, so, my spouse would be one that would be hard to get there in time, I mean, so, I'm okay with that, too.
Let's just do four members.
Did we invite, we invited their spouse, though, to dinner, didn't we?
Yes.
So, I would probably come, and I'll start the meeting for you there, just so I can, like, do that formal part, I would probably leave and come back here, um, I'll just, I wanted you to tell me when you get back here, what time you guys left ATR.
Okay.
I think we can handle that out. So, then I'd be able to.
Yeah, you mentioned the internment and all that.
Okay, in public, and we're good with four to five?
Yes.
Or, if the times are good on here, then that's good, like, yeah, I'm fine with all the times.
And then, um.
I think that answers some questions, so I'll get Rebecca to do it, I'll talk to